You're a good group. You're a very good group. So, okay, I want to, I want to welcome you guys for tonight's meeting and everything. So if you could go ahead and please stand and we're going to say the pledge allegiance to the flag and we're going to start off with the prayer. Mr. Step.
Heavenly Father, as always, we thank you for this glorious day. We thank you for this time. We thank you for this wonderful county. We thank you for this wonderful state and this wonderful country we live in. As we wrap up Memorial Day this, this year, Father, we thank you for those who have, who have paid the ultimate sacrifice, those who have in the past, those who are, have recently have paid that sacrifice and those who will in the future to continue to preserve our freedoms that we enjoy here in this great country. Father, bless this council, bless this county. Thank you for everything and all that you do for us. Thank you for the provision. Thank you for safety, security, and just thank you for all the blessings that you bestow upon us day in and day out. Jesus' most precious and holy name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Appreciate everybody coming tonight. We'll go ahead and get started with the agenda tonight. We've got, the council has the agenda before us. Is there any deletions, additions or corrections to the agenda, council? See anything? Okay. All right. Here then, the chair moves that the agenda be accepted, accepted by unanimous consent. Okay. Next on the agenda is the minutes. Okay, same here. The minutes are April 23rd. Any additions, deletions or corrections to the minutes, council? Okay. Hearing none, the chair moves that the minutes be accepted as unanimous consent. Next on the agenda is dispersments of May 21st and May 28th. We have had a chance to take a look at all those. Any additions, deletions or corrections to the dispersments? Okay. Hearing none, the chair moves that the dispersments be accepted as unanimous consent. All right. All right. First up tonight, we've got a proclamation of National Trails Day. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read that into the record, please?
Proclamation, National Trails Day, June 1st, 2024. Whereas National Trails Day, the first Saturday of June, is an annual celebration of America's trails initiated by the American Hiking Society in 1992, which encourages people across the country to get outside and enjoy trails in their communities and to explore trail systems in their region. And whereas trails make accessing the outdoors by foot, bike and wheelchair more user-friendly for everyone and are essential outdoor spaces that allow individuals to use active transportation instead of car trips, thereby reducing traffic, vehicle miles traveled, emissions, helping the environment, bringing powerful economic opportunity to communities of all sizes and delivering health and happiness to so many people. And whereas Maryland's Eastern Shore has fewer off-road trails for its 456,815 residents than other parts of the state and the 7.5 million visitors who come to Maryland for outdoor recreation and fun. And whereas residents on the Eastern Shore ranked having places to walk and bike safety among their top priorities in land preservation and parks and recreation plans and express support for building more trails in their counties and towns. And whereas Talbot Thrive and the Eastern Shore Trail Network are working with counties, municipalities and the state to plan and develop safe facilities separated from vehicular traffic to encourage bicyclists, walkers, the physically challenged and other non-motorized users of all ages to become more active and spend time outdoors, thereby improving their fitness and health. And whereas Talbot Thrive and the Eastern Shore Trail Network are increasing access for both residents and tourists to natural, cultural and historical sites, which will provide health and economic benefits to counties, municipalities and businesses in the region, bringing additional revenue and savings in healthcare costs to local economies, enhancing real estate values and increasing the number of visits and longer stays. And whereas Talbot County is committed to working toward the shared vision of connecting people and communities through a safe and sustainable Eastern Shore Trail Network. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, do hereby proclaim June 1st, 2024, as National Trails Day and encourage all residents to get outside and enjoy our trails, given under the hands and the great seal of Talbot County this 28th day of May in the year of our Lord, 2024.
Great. Madam Secretary, good job. Is there a motion?
I'll, I'll move for the proclamation.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion seconded to approve the proclamation as presented. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Okay, well, Heather, is she here? Yep, come on up, Heather. If you want to bring somebody up with you, come on up. Yeah. Okay, yeah, yeah. Got to have the board members. Got to have them.
Got to have them.
Bring the gang, bring the gang.
Yep.
Thank you. I'll try and keep it short.
No problem. You just, but if you don't mind just introducing everybody, that would be great.
Sure. If you guys want to introduce yourselves.
Richard Marx.
Kevin Foll.
Ted Nouse.
Okay.
Supportive members of my board.
Okay.
Thank you to the County Council for signing this important proclamation. We at Talbot Thrive and the Eastern Shore Trail Steering Committee, led by Owen Bailey at the Eastern Shore Land Conservancy, are excited to be part of this growing effort to support more trails in Talbot County and connect us to a trail network in the entire Delmarva region. It's an exciting time to be celebrating National Trails Day, but there's much work, much work to be done to catch up to other parts of the state when it comes to the construction of trails. These essential outdoor spaces will play a critical role in making Talbot County an attractive place to live and visit, and the construction of active transportation network should be a priority moving forward. We are making headway in several areas of Talbot County. The design of the Oxford Parks Connector Trail, which will connect three parks in Oxford and get people off the busy Oxford Road, will be completed by August. This fall, the state hopes to announce that the design of the Frederick Douglass Trail from Easton to Clayton, Delaware, will be funded through a federal carbon reduction program grant. The town of Queen Anne is, Queen Anne is exploring developing their own section of rail into a linear park, which will be the first municipality to move forward with this section of the Frederick Douglass Rail Trail. The purpose, the purchase by the county of the Poplar Hill property on Oxford Road has the potential to be the eastern terminus of a trail from Eastern to Oxford. As an organization dedicated to advocating for more outdoor spaces for all to enjoy, we hope to be included in the design and implementation process for these and future projects that we will have the continuing support of the County Council moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Counsel?
I think it's always great to get people outdoors and trails are certainly an integral part within the state of Maryland, but most importantly here on the Eastern Shore. And great job on your efforts for what you're doing right now. And again, welcome aboard. Thank you.
Yep.
It's great to promote health in our county, and that's what the trails do. So, thank you.
I took my scouts on the Cross Island Trail and the South Island Trail not too long ago in neighboring Queen Anne's County, and I look forward to the day when we have that kind of quality facilities right here at home for our, our own residents. So, thank you for your good work that you are doing to make that, that vision a reality.
Thank you.
Awesome job all around, everyone. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. And I'll say the same thing. Thanks a lot. And really the effort in, in Oxford too. A few weeks ago, you were here. So, really, really excited for that, getting that started and everything. So, we're definitely big supporters of you guys, that's for sure. Anything, anytime you, you need us for anything, you, you come in here and we'll do the best we can to get you walking where you need to be. Okay. All right. All right. We got something for you up here. Come on up.
Someone come up and get your picture taken. It'd be a good picture. There you go. Look at that. Can you see?
Definitely. Make sure we.
Okay, we're good. All right, you guys ready? One, two, three. Okay, one more. One, two and three. Thank you.
Good.
Sorry, half the whole time.
Yeah, you can see it. Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Chuck.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Ted, did you throw a piece named that?
I did.
Okay. Next on the agenda is a certificate of recognition for the Talbot County Department of Corrections. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and, and read that into the record, please?
Certificate of Commendation to the Talbot County Department of Corrections. Whereas the Talbot County Department of Corrections was recently notified that it had achieved 100% compliance with the auditing standards set by the Maryland Department of Public Safety and Correctional Services for adult detention centers. And whereas, through the commitment, dedication and efficiency of the entire staff, this is the second time such a distinguished recognition has been achieved. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, do hereby award this certificate of recognition to the Director, Administrative Team and Staff of the Talbot County Department of Corrections on this, the 28th day of May 2024, and congratulate the entire department on achieving 100% compliance.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion seconded to go ahead and put this recognition into the record. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Okay. You guys want to come on up? Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah. If you guys could introduce yourself.
Good evening. I'm Joe Hughes, Deputy Director.
Okay.
Captain Cindy Green, Chief of Security.
Okay.
Lieutenant Christine Fields, Standards Coordinator.
That's great. That's great.
So this is the second in a row that we received 100% on the audit. It's very hard to get 100%, but to do it two consecutive audits in a row is really good.
Yeah, it sure is.
We had, it takes a team. It's a lot of parts to the audit. It takes a team. Lieutenant Fields is our quarterback. She runs the show on the field. But it takes everybody in the department.
Right.
Since COVID, they changed the audits up. They would come to us and go through all our paperwork. Now they want us to send them all the paperwork to them. So Lieutenant Fields had to scan in all the paperwork and send it to them.
Right.
So that part is very time consuming. It's a lot. Just one section I know was 36,000 pages that she had to do, and that was only a little, small part of one section. So we, we've all worked together and we've come up with new ways to do it, and we're able to do it now mostly on the computers that we can just export it and send it. So it's, we're saving a lot of money on paper and all that. Just the time it takes to scan it all in.
I got you. That's good. That's good. So, okay. Counsel?
And then just thank you for being here again this evening, as you were your last meeting. Thank you for all that you do.
Yep.
Great job. Thank you.
Congratulations. This is, this is really a sign of, of the very good work that you're doing and everything that we can do to get the word out about what is so, well, it's behind closed doors, isn't it? Quite intentionally. But, but getting the good word out about the, the important work that you're doing in promoting an important aspect of public safety for our community. Thank you.
I'll echo everything. I mean, guys, phenomenal job, especially two years in a row. I, I knew these things are not easy. I got the, the chance to, you know, to thank Director Kogolos last time, so pleasure to, to reiterate that. Thanks to the three of yous and just please extend that thanks out to the, to the entire crew. So appreciate you guys. Thank you.
And I'll follow up too with, it just shows us in the county and the community how, how phenomenal your team is. That, that's for sure. That, that's what it shows us. And not only 100% back-to-back. I mean, that just really shows you how awesome you guys really are. So, we really appreciate you and all you're doing. So, come on up. We got a little certificate for you.
All right, ready? One, two, three. One, two and three. Thank you.
Okay, good job. Okay. The next on the agenda is an update from Maryland Environmental Services. If you guys want to come on up, that'd be great.
We're going to tag you today.
Okay, that's good. That's good. No problem.
I've been told I talk too much.
Yep, that's all right. Well, you can't, well, you can't do too much in five minutes. Okay, that's all right.
That's exactly right.
Okay.
And before I start, I wanted to thank Council and Step for including a remembrance, Memorial Day Remembrance in his opening prayer because it's not all about hamburgers and hot dogs. It's a reminder. So, thank you.
Amen. Yep.
We have a slideshow. My question, I'm going to have to do it by memory. It's, I'm in trouble.
Yep. How's that? I won't make this quick. Gary, you've got the comms. Go ahead and advance it. One more. It's fine. Dispense with the agenda. So, we always open with a reminder of what the midshore agreement is. It was an 80, I say it was because you'll hear some updates going forward. But an 80-year agreement with 24 counties on the upper shore to handle all your solid waste management needs. MES, Maryland Environmental Service, which I'm the managing director of the environmental operations. Go right into the introductions, I'm sorry. But for those who don't know me, I'm Tim Ford, Managing Director for Environmental Operations, and I'll have my other guys introduce themselves when they get there. But as a reminder that we have this agreement in place, and it's been a good agreement for all over 30 years now. And, and we've recently evaluated Midshore Two in terms of its current life, and if that's the next slide. We had estimated a couple of years back that we were trending for a surplus in, in permitted airspace for the landfill. And so we approached Caroline County about a year ago and asked if they were interested in extending the term of the landfill. Through a period of somewhat intense negotiation over the last year, we're happy to say that there was a tentative agreement reached. In fact, we'll be circulating a revised memorandum of understanding tomorrow with, through the four administrators to, to get that ball rolling in terms of memorializing the agreement in place. But in general, Caroline County did not have to extend or agree to allow the landfill to be extended. We could have moved on to Queen Anne's County. In fact, we are preparing to do so and still are until we get permits in hand and this approval agreed in, in writing. But they, they were interested in negotiating as long as there was some consideration for their extension. So we, we looked hard at the numbers. We, the four counties enlisted the help of a, of a financial expert as well to review the numbers that we had put together. And at the end of the day, what we agreed to in principle is a host fee that we will pay Caroline County for approximately, what's it, the next, we have 12 years and then we get another six, or 18 years, I guess, a host fee for, for the, in return of extending the agreement for another 12 years. So the way that works is that we'll pay a $3 a ton fee now. We recognized that we wanted to, it's all relative, right, in terms of how the numbers all work out. But we want to break it up so that we can show the county something now in return for this, for this extension. And that $3, $3 a ton, per ton fee would be paid on reseeded inbound municipal solid waste through 123130. After that point, we'll pay the county $6 a ton for an additional 12 years and, or until the airspace at the landfill is used. And at that point, we'll move on to Queen Anne's County. Queen Anne's County still is obligated to take its turn as well. The money that we'll, the money that we're realizing to be able to pay a host fee comes out of debt service, restating debt service. And it's, without going into great detail, the way we're required to accrue for closure costs. We have to pay for post-closure care of the landfills. In fact, we're doing so in Midshore One for at least 30 years and probably longer. And that costs money. And the way you accrue for that under Gatsby is based on airspace. But because we were accruing it on airspace, we weren't going to be fully accrued for those closure costs if we closed by calendar year. So we were accruing additional monies to close by 2031. So that money becomes available now because we can accrue fully over the amount of permitted airspace for those capital costs. So, and those closure costs. So that allows us to fund this host fee. The idea is that whatever the host fee was going to be didn't result in a, in a shortfall in any budget year. So that was important for the other three counties involved, that we didn't have to come to the counties with a hat in hand and saying, we need to pay a supplemental fee because we don't have enough money to run the landfill. We've never done it in 30 years. We don't want to do it for the remaining 50. So that was all part of the negotiation. So that's where we are. And then the next steps, we have an MOU that we've revised a 2005 agreement between the four counties. That's being revised or has been revised, and we'll circulate that, as I said earlier, through the, the county administrators. And we'll get that in your hands soon for your consideration. Next slide. So this is just a, a slide to talk about the service period extension. And what the next step for us will be is to build cells one and five, once this agreement is fully realized at Midshore Two. And that'll allow us to, to, to fully build out the landfill so that we can utilize the full permitted airspace that we have through our permit with NDE. Engineering and construction costs for both those cells is, it will be bond-financed. The other thing that we had to consider when we were looking at this extension was if we had to, to construct an additional cell to fill out the remaining service period through 2031, that was going to be self-financed. We weren't going to be able to do a bond financing for that because of the period, the term. So this allows us to go back and, and fund the, the two remaining cells through bond financing. And again, MES has the ability to do that. Next slide. And so we still have a Midshore Three permit process ongoing. Nothing is ever certain in this world. And because of time considerations, the length of time it takes to get a permit for, for a landfill, we're continuing with the permitting at Midshore Three. So we have completed the phase one. There's three phases, especially with permitting a landfill. We're in the phase two, site environmental investigation phase of the permitting process, and we'll continue to do that. We'll suspend once we have the agreement fully in place and, and then restock and, and talk to Queen Anne's County about specifically what they want to pursue at that point, since we will have the time. And with that, we're going to move on. Chuck's going to pick up the, the conversation and then Gary will wrap it up.
Yeah, very good. Excuse me. Just for posterity, my name's Chuck Ingram. And again, this slide is just an update on our proposed tipping fees for fiscal year '25, starting on July 1st. How are you going to fund a $9.5 million operating budget at a landfill? The answer's almost always going to be tipping fees, right? We call these gate rates, but it's the only rate we have. We don't have separate contract rates for other customers. Everyone pays the same gate rate. So our trash gate rate will be $70 per ton, which reflects just a 50 cent increase. And brush and yard waste, $45 a ton. Again, that, that's a 50 cent per ton increase as well. Next, the Midshore Regional Recycling Program is completely separate from the Midshore Solid Waste Agreement. So the first $5.25 a ton of revenue that comes in at the gate rate is set off to the side as a surcharge. That goes directly to fund the recycling program. So we bumped that up a little bit. It's currently $5 per ton is the surcharge, and July 1st it'll inch up to $5.25 a ton. And brush is commensurate, right? It's going to go from 270 to 275. So not moving the needle tremendously, but reflective of some cost pressures for the recycling program. Next slide. Other than the gate rate, there's not any other really moving parts to figure out of revenue. It's except for how many tons are you going to get, how much you're going to come in, right? This is kind of boring, you know, as far as bar charts go, but it's what we like to see. It's quite steady and predictable, particularly over the last four, five, six years. Been, been good numbers for us, pretty flat. And so you'll see there at FY '25 at the end, we're anticipating 142,000 tons of billable trash to fund the program, fund the operations, which is consistent with what we've seen in the current year and prior few years. Getting a little more specific, just to the operation taking place here in Easton at the transfer station. So these are six months of operations for us. Again, very consistent with historical numbers, 20,000 tons of trash, 2,700 tons of yard waste, a lot of, you know, it's, it's a busy operation, a lot of small quantity transactions, you know. So 18,000 total transactions in that six-month period. Hodo's very popular, 11,000 customers come in there, and we get 505 tons just at that, you know, small Hodo operation. And, you know, of course, we sell the punch cards, which are, you know, revenue for the county to help fund the program a little bit, right? Looking at condition of the landfill itself, the, you know, it was closed in 2023. So we have our exposed geomembrane cap. You know, one thing that's nice about that, when you're doing inspection, you can see everything. You know, you can walk around and routinely taking care of minor tears, things like that. It's very normal. There's a program where we take coupons, basically, you know, small samples of the material as it's aging in place, and they're sent to the manufacturer. There's several laboratories. They do an analysis, the chemical and physical properties of the material and give us, you know, some feedback. And after seven years, you know, those parameters are all in good condition, which obviously is what we want to see. Routinely monitoring for landfill gas, and the cap is working well. Our landfill gas collection system's functioning well. We have good performance there. Last item, maybe it's a little nuanced, but we're going, we're poised to start a sort of a technical analysis of the existing candlestick flares there in comparison to some different technology, which would be a closed flare, and just verify the adequacy of what is being provided now as far as destruction of that gas. Again, this is all really driven by regulations. Like there's a recent methane divisions rule for landfills that started last June, so we're, we're working in that, in that framework. All right, now, moving back over to Midshore Two with Bridgley, um, and more numbers, right? So about seventy thousand tons for six months of operation, right in line with what we're, you know, what we're predicting for next year as well. Thirty-four hundred tons of brush, fifteen tons of tires, ten tons of mattresses, and that HODO is, um, at Holly Road we operate, um, is also pretty popular with nearly a thousand tons of, of waste there. And as far as operations, we're still bearing all our waste and self-reared in Midshore
All right, the home stretch. My name's Gary Laseco. I'm the senior project manager for, um, I'm responsible for our Midshore operations. This slide represents a regional event that we held at the Midshore Two landfill just a few weeks ago. It's called the rodeo, but it's essentially a skills competition for heavy equipment operators and for truck drivers that are, um, employed in the waste industry. We get folks, um, from New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Virginia, of course, Maryland that participate in the event. And this year, for the sixth year, but, but the first since twenty eighteen, we hosted it at the Midshore Two landfill. You can see some of the photos here. There's several different, uh, competitions that take place for both heavy equipment and for the trucks. And, and basically, these operators have to, have to navigate these pieces of heavy equipment through very, very narrow courses, um, in a timed event, and also, um, move objects such as the barrels that are shown there. Uh, we had nearly a hundred attendees and thirty-six competitors. Many, many different pieces of equipment that were displayed by our vendors. Um, MES operators, uh, did very well in the event. And it, uh, one benefit or, um, yeah, benefit to participating is if you place in the event first or second in your event, you get to go to the national competition. And, uh, last year, we didn't host the event, but in the regional competition, we had, uh, an employee, Logan Milby, placed in the regionals. He went to nationals and was the top operator in the entire country, um, for that event. So, um, I bring this up, uh, primarily because we anticipate having the event at Midshore Two for the next year or two, and, um, it's potentially an opportunity for both county and municipal operators or truck drivers to participate.
We can get some of your, the repurposing center folks over too, so.
Yeah.
You got to give a shout out to the caterer, so.
Uh, Piazza, Piazza catered the event.
Excellent food.
That's right.
Very good, very good.
Uh, our regional, uh, Midshore Regional Recycling Program, again, these are not a lot of commodity numbers, um, similar to our trash numbers. We've seen a lot of consistency over the last several years for our recyclables. Right on target for anywhere between three thousand to thirty-three hundred tons per year. We haven't seen really a lot of change in the commodity mix, um, since COVID. When, when COVID occurred, we, we saw quite a bit more cardboard pickup, obviously from kind of, um, shipping of, of goods and items. Uh, but, but over the last year or two, it's been pretty steady in terms of the commodity mix. The, uh, commodity pricing that we've received over the last several months has been very favorable to the operation. Our mixed metal and plastic, we get two hundred and forty dollars for every ton that we, that we deliver to market, um, and, and net about a hundred and forty dollars a ton once you, once you take out the trucking costs. Again, fiber prices remain, uh, very, very high, um, especially for this time of year. And, um, glass, you know, a lot of, um, if you look at, um, single stream recycling, a lot of the glass ends up as a waste product. It goes to the landfill where perhaps it's used, um, in a beneficial way at the landfill itself, but it doesn't end up at, uh, you know, in a recycling market. Because we separate the glass between clear glass and, and mixed green and amber glass, we have a much higher demand for our product and, and therefore the, uh, the pricing that we receive for it.
So those, those, um, revenues get plugged back into the program, just so everyone's clear about that. It's an enterprise fund and it's, those monies go back into that, to run that operation.
Right, so about two-thirds to, to three-quarters, depending on the, um, commodity, recyclable commodity markets, um, two-thirds of the Midshore Recycling Program revenue is from the tipping fees that, that come out of the gate rate at Midshore Two, and the balances from these, these commodities that we sell. We had our semi-annual household hazardous waste day at Queen Anne's County, um, last month. It was very well attended. We had five hundred and seventy vehicles, lots of electronics, nearly a thousand gallons of, of latex paint, um, to over twenty-two thousand pounds of hazardous material. The cost there is, is pretty, you know, pretty, you know, sizable, sixty thousand dollars, but it re, really represents about a value of, of a hundred dollars per vehicle that attended the event. Um, and that's, um, that hundred dollars per vehicle provides considerable ecological benefit rather than that material going into the landfill or going somewhere where it really shouldn't. Our next event will be back in Talbot County at the Midshore One Transfer Station. That's been set for October twenty-sixth, so tell all your friends and family to, uh, bring any hazardous waste items, household hazardous waste items that they have to that And finally, some, uh, some recent community outreach that we've participated in. Tidy Up Talbot, which was, uh, just a week or so ago, we provide the recycling bins, um, for that event and deliver the rec, the recyclables that are collected amongst the trash to, uh, to our local markets. We'll provide a recycling at the MML and Mako conferences this summer and, um, as always, at the Waterfall Festival, uh, this fall. And, um, if we can get in line, we'll, we'll probably try to provide a recycling truck at the Eastern Christmas Parade this year.
That's good.
Recycle, okay.
One, one, one clarification and then, uh, one question. Uh, the clarification on, uh, when you were talking about glass recyclables, you said that two-thirds of the revenue for the program comes from the tipping fee. Is that specific, the tipping fee for the recyclables? Or are you talking about the global picture?
The tipping fee at Midshore Two, so that five dollars and twenty-five cents per ton?
Yes.
Um, if you were to bring a ton of trash in, that five dollars and twenty-five cents out of that sixty-nine fifty, that goes to fund the Midshore Recycling Program.
Yeah. And, and, and so we're talking about the, this is the, the total revenues for the, the landfill, not specific to the recyclables program? Cause you have, you, you do have a tipping fee for recyclables, you said?
Yes, yeah, it's, it's wrapped up within that sixty-nine fifty. It's inclusive within that, within that, uh, figure.
Okay, thank you. Um, and, uh, with, with, uh, the county's recent action to, uh, extend, uh, Midshore Two, uh, of course, we're going to see, uh, an increase in tipping fees as a, as a consequence of that, uh, action. Do you have any concerns that, uh, uh, about loss of business from those who can elect to use the service? Obviously municipalities are going to use the service, uh, with, uh, with that increase.
That's a, that's an excellent question, and it was certainly a consideration in the negotiations. What we didn't want to get into a situation is where we'd begin to lose customers because our tipping fees were too high. That was a very big consideration. For those who don't know, the Eastern Shore is not, uh, flow-controlled counties, uh, free market. You go wherever you want to go if you're a commercial hauler, and the vast bulk of the lo, the waste that we receive comes from commercial haulers. So we have to be competitive. We've been competitive. If you see the flat line we have on our volumes, it's, it's obvious that we're competitive and we, we're maintaining a certain bit of the market share for that. We don't anticipate, we anticipate about a one-point-four percent increase, uh, in our, in our tipping fees per year as a result of the host fee. That's what anticipated, it's not guaranteed. There's, you'll see in when we write the MOU, there's flexibility written into that part of the agreement. So basically, we can waive that if we don't need it in any given year, and that'll be in consultation with the county administrators who are obviously working on the, the county's behalfs. But we don't anticipate dropping off any volume. When we looked at the, from Midshore Two, um, life, what our average cost per year increase in tipping fees have been, it's been about one-point-five percent or so. So, yes, that could be somewhat additive. If you think about the causes for those increases, it didn't have a host fee, obviously, back then, but we're not, we're not overly concerned that we'll lose volume at this rate. Again, we have structured this so that we can pay for a good chunk of this through debt service restructuring and through the, how we reallocate our closure fees. So we're very considerate of it. I mean, we run like a business, so.
Yeah.
Um, it's important that we maintain a competitive.
Thank you.
No other questions, guys? Thank you. Great job, as always.
Thank you for being, um, stalwart stewards of our local environment. Thank you.
Just thank you for the update. Greatly appreciate it.
Yep, great job, guys. Really appreciate it. Uh, Mr. Stanton?
I'd just like to take the opportunity to recognize MES for their work. They, they do a good job. This is big business.
Yeah.
And, uh, I'd like to also recognize council for all your work in, in, uh, with the other counties to come up with the, the new agreement that you're going to be considering to enter into. Uh, but also want to highlight Ray Clark's efforts as our county engineer, who guides us through a lot of this complicated business and, uh, but thank you for, uh, your support.
We'll call Ray the voice of reason. And all this, and, and one thing I didn't bring up, there's a added benefit to this extension, and that is that the extension overall will, um, will now go beyond the original eighty-year term that we contemplated, uh, back in, uh, two thousand. It's, um, it's, it's going to be extended by another twelve years, so.
That's good.
That's good for all the counties.
Yeah, that is good.
Again, you know, this doesn't, you're not paying for this. This is run on your behalf, but you're not paying tax dollars for the, for, um, the landfill piece of it at least.
Okay, well, we really appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next up is, um, an update, um, from the Chapel District Elementary School
Welcome.
Thank you, President Callahan.
Yeah.
Good evening, members of the council and staff. I come before the council this evening, um, to request consideration of and support for the Guaranteed Maximum Price Contract Amendment associated with the Chapel District Elementary School, uh, renovation and addition project. So just a refresher, the project delivery method for the, um, for the construction project is construction management at risk, uh, the construction management at risk model delivery method. Uh, the primary benefit of it is the Guaranteed Maximum Price Contract, uh, also, which allows potential cost savings, contingency management, and allows for the pre-construction services, uh, that benefit, uh, construction schedule and constructibility. So I know that, uh, the council has a busy agenda this evening, and obviously, this is in a super important, uh, project to Talbot County Public Schools and to the county. Um, so to be sensitive to the council's time, I can move as quickly as necessary or as det, I can be as detailed as necessary. So I'm going to kind of go through the, uh, slides fairly quickly. Um, and due to the previous discussions that we had at a work session, I know the council is aware of some of the details, so I'm going to, you know, speak to those a little bit, but not go into great, great detail. So, um, so there's a lot of information associated with this slide, uh, and I just, to lay the groundwork, obviously, um, the Y-axis or the, the vertical axis, uh, has the project cost in millions. The horizontal axis, um, shows what the project budget was back in January at the construction documents, document submission. The center column shows bid day, and the current column is the, uh, current estimated total cost for the project. Now, the Guaranteed Maximum Price is separate, um, from, or is part of the total cost of the project. Uh, so this, this graph is showing a more broad picture of the overall costs that are outside of the, uh, Guaranteed Maximum Price, but the Guaranteed Maximum Price is inclusive of the slide. So, uh, obviously, the glaring issue, uh, that I have, um, been dealing with and has been frustrating to the design team is obviously that we budgeted back in January a total project cost of thirty-one-point-four-six million. And just to, just to elaborate on the slide a little bit more, um, the red is obviously the, um, the state portion, and the blue is the county's portion. The green lists the alternate cost, which is also a county portion. And then on the far right column, we have the Critchlow Atkins reimbursement portion for their, their portion of the building. So, um, the bid day, uh, results were, uh, significantly higher than what we were projecting. And since that time, we have been able to reduce the overall project cost to forty-one, an estimated forty-one-point-two-seven million, which is about three-point-eight-six, um, million reduction from bid day. Uh, those costs are inclusive of the alternates, which the Board of Education has recommended for approval at their, um, meeting, May meeting, which took place a couple of weeks ago. So the total county portion at bid day was thirty-one-point-seven-eight million. We've reduced that by approximately five million to twenty-six-point-seven-one million, uh, currently. Uh, and I am, I'm speaking in still estimation, I'm speaking in estimation still because, uh, there are a number of items that, uh, still need to be bid out. So, um, and when I speak to that, I'm speaking about fixtures, furniture and equipment, um, and some other, uh, consultation requirements associated with the project. This slide, the current, um, column is, is, um, a very brief summary of the overall project costs. Within the council's, uh, um, information that I provided, there is a much more detailed breakdown on page one that mirrors, uh, that column as far as total cost of the county. So just to talk very briefly, um, about that spreadsheet that I provided for the council, it is color-coded, uh, to match, uh, what the graph is showing. So left column is the county funds. In green, I have the accepted alternates. In red is the county portion of thirteen-point-three-five million. Critchlow Atkins reimbursement at one-point-two-one million, and then the total final county cost of twenty-six-point-seven, uh, million for the overall cost for the project. So I just wanted to be, have full disclosure and full transparency on what we are seeing the project cost to be locally and what the state funds, um, currently are, uh, and will be, I should say, of the thirteen-point-three-five million. So jumping to the alternates, uh, very briefly for each one, the Critchlow Atkins portion, uh, is a third classroom for their, uh, for their operation there. And that is, uh, obviously, uh, strongly supported by the Board of Education for a number of reasons. Chapel families and, and students, uh, take advantage of the Critchlow Atkins childcare, uh, and they have a extensive waitlist, so we're looking to expand that in order to provide and cover for that need. This cost obviously is, is, um, not obviously, but it is covered by Critchlow. Uh, so this is a, a kind of a no-brainer, assuming that the council supports the project, uh, Critchlow would be covering the cost for that third classroom. So alternate number five, um, is the site awnings, uh, or covered canopy. And at the bottom of the drawing, uh, is the bus rider loop, and to the right is the car rider loop for the new building, for the renovated building. And, uh, this alternate would allow, obviously, an inclement weather for, um, children to get onto the sidewalk and out of the, out of the rain, um, or snow. And so that is, uh, trying to be consistent with what we're providing in each school building moving forward. Easton Elementary School has them. It is a, a benefit to have those covered walkways. And the last piece, uh, to the, uh, alternates, one-point-six-million-dollar price tag is the solar array. So this was included as an alternate because we wanted to see how much this would actually cost, um, to offset about half of the total energy consumption of the chapel complex. Uh, so the- So, the the solar array is is certainly not something that is mandatory. Now, it does support the lead certification for the project for about five points. And it is it is a requirement from the state to that this building meet lead silver. And so, those five points are beneficial to that calculation. But once again, I just want to stress that in an effort to reduce the, you know, the carbon footprint and to be more green, we wanted to make sure that we had some level of renewable energy associated with this, what is going to be a state-of-the-art building.
And Mr. Schaefer, there's there's also geothermal as part of this project.
Yes, there is geothermal, which does also add to that lead score. And that was basis of design, so it was, you know, the HVAC system is designed around that that system. So, that that is the the summary of the overall costs and alternates. So, the Guaranteed Maximum Price, as I said, is a portion of that already shared overall cost for the project. So, the total guaranteed maximum price, as stated on this slide, is thirty-seven million nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, inclusive of the one point six for the alternates. So, it this evening, I am asking that the council consider supporting the chapel project moving forward. And so, the the support is specifically associated with the Guaranteed Maximum Price shown here. So, I, you know, like I said, I could speak a lot more about the details as to how we got to where we are, and I can certainly do that if the council would like. But at this point, I am asking that the council consider the supporting the Guaranteed Maximum Price as stated.
Okay, that sounds good. Good job. Mr. Stapp?
The only question I had, Kevin, I don't know if you know this or not, or it could be a follow-through. Do we know what the ROI is on the on the solar array?
Yes, and and I want to thank Mr. Lesher. He did contact me earlier and ask the same question. So, so I was a little bit prepared for this, so I did share some information with Mr. Lesher. But but basically, the ROI is about fourteen years.
Fourteen, okay.
Which is a little higher than you would like it to be. You'd like it to be right around seven to nine years.
And life cycle for that is forty years-ish?
I it would it would be, I would safely say thirty. Now, you do see some diminished output in a solar array once you get past year twenty-five. But ultimately, part of the reason that the price tag, which is six hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars for the solar array, I want to be clear on that, that is the the portion of the one point six. In a residential application, you know, the the industry basically looks at solar arrays by per-watt cost. And this array is around four dollars, right, almost exactly four dollars per watt. Now, if you do a Google search and look at what a solar array costs per watt for a standard commercial installation, you're looking at about two fifty. So, it is significantly more expensive than what you would see, you know, generally speaking. But there's a lot of requirements associated with this solar array because it's number one on a school property, which requires fencing, which we want. We over-engineered the support structure for the for the the racking system for the solar array itself. Typically, they're just driven into the ground, but of course, we wanted to use concrete footing and that type of thing. So, so there are some added costs that increase that ROI because it is a school site that required some sub-metering and and additional transformer and that kind of thing. So, you wouldn't have have that in a typical commercial application.
Gotcha, thank you. Sorry, Pete, I didn't know you were gonna ask that.
Appreciate that that I'm not the only one with that on my mind.
You have anything else?
Nope, that was that was my that was my my question in advance.
Okay.
I had one question. Did I understand you to say that Critchlow is paying the full cost of the classroom?
Yes, the full cost for that third classroom and so just to be clear, the total price tag for the Critchlow portion is about one point eight two million. And six hundred thousand, roughly, six hundred and four thousand is coming from the state through a cooperative youth space grant, and then Critchlow is responsible for the rest of that.
Okay, good.
No question?
Yep.
Okay.
Although I'll put an asterisk on that in that Critchlow is, while they're going to pay, they are among their fundraising strategies for this is an ask to the to the ARPA fund, yes.
I did have one other question. I'm not clear on what benefit the solar array has, because I think you said it was somewhat optional or?
Yeah, and Ms. Milky, that is the reason that we did it as an alternate. So, it was easily it was easily determined what the actual cost for the for the solar would be rather than be have it be part of the project generally. You know, as I said, the solar is reducing the carbon footprint for the campus. And it is a benefit from a lead perspective, which is a sustainability requirement that we have for the building. But once again, it is not a requirement, and we do believe that we can meet the lead silver requirement without the solar array, although it will be much closer. So, I just want to be clear on that.
Thank you.
Okay, council, any any other questions?
No questions, but but by way of discussion, my my look at the at the solar array and the reason why I asked about the the payback period, I'm I'm sorry that it's not the not a faster payback period. It nevertheless is less than half of the life expectancy for the for the array. And what that means is that in the long run, in the long run, this reduces operating costs. Those operating costs, of course, come back to come back to the county. Ultimately, we're we're the ones who are making the appropriation to to pay those to pay those energy bills for this and every other public school facility. And I think that.
Oh, sorry.
So, so do we do we swallow the upfront cost here, the seven hundred thousand dollar upfront cost, knowing that we have today cash reserves where we can tackle that or bondability to tackle that? Knowing that knowing that down the road, this can this can help ease, you know, this can help ease the tax burden for in the out years of this project.
And one other item that, you know, does support Mr. Lesher's thought process or methodology. One of the challenges that the school system has not tackled yet is the required electrification of our busing system. Geographically, we're very challenged when it comes to the capacity of electric buses. And as of right now, as of July one, we cannot purchase a diesel bus without a waiver from the state. So, there may come a time where we have to have a depot at some of our outlying schools like Chapel because of the range of buses. And this could, you know, in the future, help to offset some of those electrical requirements at that site. So, just throwing it out there is, you know, it's a future thing. It's not a now thing, but it is where we're where we're trending.
What is the factual basis for your contention that in the long run, it's going to be more cost savings to have the solar array?
The 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 payback period on on this, as Mr. Schaefer said, is is just over fourteen years, which means that that you the energy savings that we get by by generating this on-site will will be roughly half over over the thirty-year life expectancy of of the project.
But what's the factual basis? Is there a study? Is there a report that says that you save money by doing this going forward?
So, it it, Mr. Schaefer?
Yeah, I can speak to that. So, so there's a, number one, there's a there's an SREC program for solar.
The what?
SREC, which is an acronym for Solar Renewable Energy Credits. So, the the solar array will earn money annually through that SREC program. Now, that's roughly fifteen thousand dollars a year. And then the solar energy produced is estimated to be about thirty-five, thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars a year. So, we're looking at a fifty thousand dollar a year generation through the through the solar array. So, those would be savings, and that's the fourteen years, so about fifty thousand fifty thousand dollars a year created by the solar array, which would offset the cost over fourteen years. So, and then after that, it's it's potentially profit, you know, you're you're reducing your your overall energy bill for the site.
Isn't the solar array or the the solar aspect of it dependent on the environment? I mean, it's not, you know, cloudy days, rainy days.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. It's an average. It's an average, but there's there's very well-documented information and lots of lots and lots of information about.
And there's opposing information, too.
About about the solar, well, yeah, I mean, I just know that that it can be pretty closely calculated what the solar, we we have a small solar array now at the Board of Education and and it's been very accurate on the generation that would come from it. I mean, it's a pretty established science as far as that goes, but but I understand the reservation. I do.
And that comes with some assumptions about that about the cost of energy. You know, certainly, if if the cost of generated of of energy off the grid goes down, the payback period goes longer, the savings from this is lower. I don't know how many people expect that to happen as we take fossil fuel plants offline and move move toward more renewables on the grid. But that's 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 one of the assumptions that is part that is baked into the calculation, yes.
Okay, do I help you?
Okay.
Okay.
I would have asked you another question if I didn't.
I I know you would have. Can you see it good?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, okay, um, okay. Is there a motion to go ahead and move forward and support this thirty-seven million dollar project?
I'll I'll move I'll move for supporting the project at the total guaranteed maximum price of thirty-seven million nine hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, we got a motion, second, to go ahead and support the Chapel Project renovation at thirty-seven million nine hundred and twenty-five thousand. Madam Secretary, could you call the for the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stapp?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay, got what you need.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, we're moving on. Just a reminder, we're getting ready to start the public hearing. So, at towards the end of the meeting, we have a public comment, so there's a sheet in the back if you guys want to sign up for public comment, okay? All right, next public hearing. How are you doing?
Hi, good.
We got Mary Kay here.
It's red.
Oh, it's, yeah, yeah, okay, yep, yep. Okay, Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and read the application for the USDA, please, into the record? Yep.
In accordance with the USDA and Rural Utility Service Regulation seventeen eighty dash nineteen A and B, the County Council of Talbot County is hereby providing public notice of their intent to apply for federal funding assistance from USDA for the planning and construction of the following project, Fairbank and Barneck Communities Tillman Island Public Sewer Connection Project.
Okay, thank you, Madam Secretary.
Council, I'm Ray Clark, county engineer. Yes, we probably about, I'm gonna say, four or five, maybe six years ago, we had secured a grant from Rural Development to develop the preliminary engineering report to extend sewer to the villages of Barneck and Fairbank, as well as lots going towards those villages. And we've basically have submitted that preliminary engineering report to the to Rural Development for their review and approval. They have provided us their approval on that. Now, we're at the stage of now moving forward with this public hearing so that we can now seek, you know, a grant and loan package from Rural Development to assist us in the extension of sewer to the villages of Barneck and Fairbank. We're looking roughly at about a hundred and twenty-seven houses that would be connected. We would say that Tillman is kind of in a unique situation where they do have a lot of poor draining soils with high groundwater and, you know, they do can receive flooding and whatnot. So, you know, this is we we see this as an area in need of, you know, basically sewer at this point in time.
Okay. All right, okay, at this time, I'm gonna open up to the public hearing. I'm gonna give you three minutes to come up and speak if you're individual, and five minutes if you're speaking for an organization. So, I'll go ahead and start here on my left where Mr. Clark is. Would anybody like to come up and and speak on behalf of this Tillman Island Public Sewer Connection? Okay, I'll go ahead and move over here to my right. Anybody want to come over here and speak up for the Tillman Sewer Project? Okay. Nobody, nobody wants to say anything. Okay, all right, everybody wants it, but nobody wants to say nothing. You know, exactly. It could be, it could be, so, all right. All right, at this at this stage, do we keep the do we keep the public open or do we close it? Do we go ahead and close it? Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and open it for discussion. Any discussion?
Are we asking for for action on this tonight?
Yes.
So.
You're asking for a motion and a second to approve the funding application.
Yep.
Well, this is this is, I think, is an important clean water initiative. We've we have been looking targeting this area. We know that that these are low-lying lands, subject to to coastal flooding, that they are in poorly drained soils, that are subject to failing septics. There, for both of those reasons, getting these properties, existing properties, existing homes off of septics and on to the public sewer, as flawed as Tillman sewer system is today, it is an improvement on the existing septics. And plus, of course, eventually, we are going to see an upgrade to that Tillman wastewater treatment plant or or a connection to Saint Michael's, which will which will further improve water quality in the area. This is this is a forward-looking action, and I I want to thank our our engineers for for doing the necessary work to get us this far. And I certainly support the submission of that grant application.
Okay, good. Any other any other questions?
With that, I'll I'll move I'll move for I'll I'll move for submitting the grant application.
Is there a second? Okay, we got a motion, second, to move forward of the grant application. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Stapp?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay, all right, good. Good job, Ray. All right, next on the agenda is a public hearing on a pending grant application. Now, it's her turn.
I'm just so excited to be with you this evening. I first want to take a quick second to thank Mr. Lesher and the others who attended the recognition of two of our CDBD grant projects. The Family Support Center Early Head Start and the Chesapeake Multicultural Resource Center had their grand openings. It was a great time, great food, and obviously, very great projects with great results, so thank you very much for attending.
It was heartwarming to see the impact on the community of those projects and 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 the children that it benefits.
Yes, yeah, thank you very much. On May fourteenth, the council reviewed the letters of interest for the FY twenty-five Department of Housing Community Development, Community Development Block Grant CDBD Program Funding Round. The council chose to partner with For All Seasons on their capital renovation project. For For All Seasons is seeking seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in community development block grant funds to support the improvements to include HVAC upgrades, bathroom renovations, interior refurbishments, and space reconfigurations. They are also pursuing an additional one million three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in private donations, capital bonds, and ARPA funding grants. With a county project administration cost, the total project expenditure will be two million seventy-one thousand dollars. We're currently working with For All Seasons to complete the immense amount of supporting documentation required for DHCD CDBD applications. This is where we are today, and we're still waiting on a few more things to be put into this, so it's definitely a large. So it's definitely a large project and we appreciate all their assistance in getting it together. For All Seasons continuing to seek letters of support from their community partners, funding letters, project plans, and cost estimates. Once we receive all the outstanding information, we will submit a complete package to DHCD in early June. Following this evening's public hearing, we're seeking council's introduction and approval of an administrative resolution authorizing submittal of the FY twenty-five CDB application to the Department of Housing Community Development. The President and CEO Beth Ann Dorman and Lauren K. Weber, the Vice President of Strategy and Development, are both here this evening to answer any questions you may have and provide any additional project details you may need.
Okay. All right, any, any discussion?
No, just that this is a worthwhile grant for a worthwhile organization and so just happy to support it and partner with For All Seasons in this CDBG grant.
Okay.
I second that.
So, so, so at this time, I'll open it up, um, for discussion with the public. Three minutes for an indi- individual and five minutes for an organization, so. Anybody here over to my left wanna come up and talk about it? Okay, okay, anybody here to the right? Okay. Yep. Okay, all right, that's good, that's good.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for having me. I'm Beth Ann Dorman, the President and CEO of For All Seasons. I just wanna say thank you to the council for partnering with us. We are continuing to serve as your only nonprofit behavioral health and rape crisis center. We are now serving a close to four thousand residents on the mid-shore. When I was with you just two years ago, we were just at the tipping point of three thousand. And so, um, this funding is really important because we are out of space. This is a short-term solution to a long-term plan that we have in place, but this will allow us to continue to operate and meet the immediate, immediate growing needs of the community. You'll recall the last time that I was in front of you, we had launched our Open Access Program. We're really proud to let you know that our no wait list continues to be the only region outpatient behavioral health clinic that can have folks walking in five days a week, both in person and with telehealth, receiving a mental health assessment that day. We are seeing right now, from the Rape Crisis Center standpoint of things, a forty-five percent increase in victims showing up at the hospital, child sexual abuse cases. And so, we're really at a critical time in the community. We're also seeing a large number of Hispanic services that we're working to meet gaps in places like Hooper's Island and Tillman Island so that we can be working with some of our migrant workers that are here on T-Vs. So this is really, um, an important time for us where we can put some renovations in place, give us some quick and fast solutions to be able to meet this immediate need while we work on our long-term plan for our continued growth.
Okay, thank you, Beth Ann. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, um, anybody else would like to, to speak? Okay. All right, we'll go, I'll go ahead and close that, um, I'll close that and then I'll go ahead and open up introduction of the administrative resolution. Madam Secretary, could you read that into the record, please?
You wanna read the entire thing or just the title?
Just the title, it's fine.
Administrative Resolution Whereas the State of Maryland Through the Department of Housing and Community Development Has Solicited Applications From Eligible Jurisdictions To Apply For Funding Under the Maryland Community Development Block Grant CDBG Program.
Okay. Being said, is there a motion?
I'll, I'll move the administrative resolution.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, second to move forward with the, the grant. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay. All right, all right, uh, moving on, on the, the agenda, the introduction of a numbered, uh, resolution. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and call that, uh, read that into the title, into the record, please?
A Resolution To Formally Close Seager's Corner Road As A County Road And Authorize The Conveyance Thereof To The Underlying Fee-Simple Owners.
Okay, that's great. Mr. Thomas, you wanna go ahead and get us kicked off on this, please?
Yes.
Yeah?
Seager's Corner Road is a short road, it's, um, less than a quarter mile long. It serves as an alternate connector between Lewistown Road and Covey's Landing Road, which also intersect. The road is in poor condition. I believe Mr. Moore can, can describe that a little bit more, but it's gonna require significant expense to be upgraded.
Okay.
Uh, and properly maintained as, as a county road. So this resolution proposes to abandon it and convey the underlying land to the, the property owners on either side, just to.
Right, right. Welcome, Brian.
Thank you, Counsel.
Yep, yep.
Yes, as he summarized.
Could you, could you tell everybody who you are?
Yeah, I'm Brian Moore, Talbot County Roads Department Superintendent.
Thanks.
Um, here today to, um, resolution to close the road, um, to disband it. As he described, it's a, it's a cutoff road, um, and it's in pretty poor shape. It's a narrow road, um, and it has a bad intersection on Lewistown Road. It's really a blind spot. And when you look at the pros and cons of maintaining the roads, um, it really doesn't, um, physical make sense to continue to the upgrade of the road. It's a very poor condition and we've spoken to the neighbors. I think it's best just to demolish the road and do away with it. I think it'd be a cost savings in the long term.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, so this is introduction, so a raise of hands?
So introduced by council?
Mm-hmm. Madam Secretary, the, uh, the, uh, the date and the time?
This will be known as Resolution Number Three Fifty-Eight and the public hearing will be on Tuesday, June twenty-fifth at five thirty P.M.
All right, thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Counsel.
That's great, okay. Madam Secretary, if you wanna read the next one, that'd be great. Title?
A Resolution To Place A Question On The Ballot At The November Two Thousand Twenty-Four General Election To Amend Section Six Fourteen Of The Charter Of Talbot County To Allow But Not Require The County Council Of Talbot County To Add Up To One Cent Per One Hundred Dollars Of Assessed Value Above The Revenue Cap For An Additional Five Years Beginning July First, Two Thousand Twenty-Six.
Okay, all right, good job. All right, uh, Mr. Thomas, you wanna go ahead and walk us through this, please?
Yes. Pursuant to Section Six Fourteen Of The County Charter, as of July First, Two Thousand Twenty-One, revenues derived from property taxes included in the constant yield tax rate certification issued by S-Stat shall not increase more than two percent from the previous year. In two thousand twenty, the council adopted Resolution Two Eighty-Eight for the purpose of placing a question on the two thousand twenty ballot to allow but not require the county council to add up to one cent per a hundred dollars of assessed value above this revenue cap for five fiscal years beginning July First, Two Thousand Twenty-One. The ballot question was approved by the voters and it will expire as of July First, Two Thousand Twenty-Six. So this resolution proposes to extend that, uh, additional one cent per a hundred dollars of assessed valuation for an additional five years beginning July First, Two Thousand Twenty-Six.
Okay, great, great. Um, any, any discussion from council? Okay?
I'll just, just a few words on this.
Yep, no problem.
So, uh, just as, as Mr. Thomas had alluded to, I mean, this, uh, you know, just to, to add to that, so thank you, Patrick, for that. The, we, I believe it was fifty-nine point five percent of the county spoke, right? When this ballot, uh, ballot question was introduced back in two thousand twenty, this would continue that for an additional five years. It was to benefit prior our, uh, our public services here in Talbot County. So, uh, the named, uh, departments that we would be seeking, uh, that would make it to the ballot question would be our Sheriff's Department, uh, Department of Emergency Services, as well as our Department of Corrections. We've seen a lot of, uh, positive things that have happened, uh, in those, uh, in those departments over the years, namely the, uh, you know, we think about LEOPS for our, uh, you know, for, for, uh, our officers, as well as a portion of our, our DES cores for, um, uh, for, for Department of Corrections. A lot of those funds have, uh, solved a lot of problems that we see in neighboring counties. So, uh, this would be, uh, again, a ballot question, uh, in November. We would need it to be on this, uh, this, uh, election in November so that way we could see it realized by the time it's expired. So, uh, you know, asking for the rest of council's support to, uh, put this in the voters' hands again, so, thank you.
Okay, good job. Any, any other discussion?
No, just that I agree with, um, Councilman Step and this is a good initiative and we wanna continue this to help our.
I agree. Okay, this is introduction, so a raise of hands, please?
Introduced by council?
Okey-dokey.
This will be known as Resolution Number Three Fifty-Nine and the public hearing will be on Tuesday, June twenty-fifth at five thirty P.M.
All righty, all right, good job, okay. Now let's move on to eligible to, uh, vote on. Madam Secretary, you wanna read, uh, Fifteen Fifty-Three into the record?
Bill Number Fifteen Fifty-Three, An Act To Establish The Two Thousand Twenty-Four, Two Thousand Twenty-Five Annual Budget And Appropriation Ordinance.
Okay. Mrs. Sparks, you wanna come on up?
Good evening.
Good evening, Counsel. It's good to see you. I'm Martha Sparks, Finance Director for Talbot County. So approximately two weeks ago, on May fourteenth, we had, uh, our final budget deliberation where I presented to you an amendment to the budget that was introduced in April. That budget had a zero impact on the total revenues and expenditures for the general fund. It just moved expenses before the, uh, between the categories. So I didn't know whether council had any questions about that or whether you wanted me to go over to, go through that in more detail.
Any questions?
No, no questions.
Okay, at, at this time, okay, you good? Okay, at this time, um, it's an introduction, so a raise of hands?
Actually, I do have a question. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Do you have a question?
No problem.
I was looking at the income tax revenue for the last few years.
Correct.
And in, I guess it is, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three, and, and, uh, maybe twenty-four. Um, we've actually had an excess, um, uh, we've raised the income tax, but we've had an excess, so.
Correct.
I'm, I guess my question is, why continue an increase in the taxes if we're sitting on these reserves? I'm just looking at, you know, the state of the economy presently is and how necessary that is.
So as I've spoken to council before, our income tax revenues are very volatile. And through the years, um, we, we rely, our, our income tax revenues are very volatile and the main reason for that is we have a very few number of high-income wage, um, high-income earners, not wage, but high-income earners in Talbot County. So that, that increase, um, over what we budget, so we budget conservatively in income tax because we're unsure of the levels. And, and we're not the only county that struggles with, um, budgeting the correct levels of income tax during budget time. But the, the excess in those revenues do go to reserves, you're correct. And we have been using the reserves and we have used the reserves in this budget. This budget does include a use of those reserves. And that was for capital improvement projects and capital outlay items. So we have used those reserves.
But more could be used.
Well, you don't really want, you don't want to use reserves for recurring expenditures. You really only want to use reserves or your savings for those items that are one-time expenditures.
And as council remembers, this year we made an adjustment in the, uh, in some of the budget assumptions where we, um, we basically diverted, uh, the income tax revenues into capital to build our reserves. And what we're seeing, and we will continue to see, is an increase in costs, especially to provide public safety services. In part, the, uh, the bill that you just put forward will help. But this year, we're budgeting, we're, we're using closer assumptions this year. So we expect that we will not see the revenues this year that we've seen in the past because we're applying to operational needs, which are recurrent needs. So we've made an adjustment this year and we need to take a close look at that. And of course, next year, as we draft the next year's budget, you can do, you can reassess at that point and determine whether we have significant space to do anything different.
Well, I'm just looking at the, the income tax revenues from past years and in twenty-two, it was six point five percent more that we received. And then it really jumped in twenty-three to thirty-seven point one eight percent more, um, that we received. And of course, we, this year isn't over, so we don't know, but it's showing that we projected, um, the tax, um, to be thirty-one million and so far, it's, what has been received is forty-five million. So I'm just saying, the trajectory seems like.
It is, but those are.
It's going up.
So, um, on a recent Conduit Street podcast by, um, Mako's, um, Executive Director and our, the head of the Legislative, um, Director there, um, recently spoke to an incre- uh, to income tax revenues throughout the state of Maryland. The Maryland income tax revenues are going down and other counties' income tax revenues are going down. Ours have not been going down. We don't know why that is, um, except that we can point to some high-wage earners or high-income earners in our state. So what we've done as, um, our county manager has mentioned, in the past, we conservative that, we, we very conservatively budgeted our income tax because we don't know the levels that we'll get. So when you budget in that way and you receive an actual income tax revenues that are much higher than your budget, you're building your saving or you're building your reserves. And actually, that's a really good policy to have and that's benefited us. And you can tell, um, as I gave in our budget, um, in the budget, uh, presentation, Fitch and Moody's both recognize our very high level of reserves. Well, um, as Clay said, we this year pivoted and we more accurately are projecting our income tax revenues to what we can actually, to a, a safe estimate of what we will actually receive. So we are, we are changing, we have included that as opposed to, um, you know, we couldn't have increased our taxes any more than we did above the two percent or the one cent.
I think in general, what we're seeing and hearing from the experts we listen to at the state level is that, um, we, we, we may start to see a decline in our income tax revenue. So this year, we did more accurately budget it, less conservatively budgeted it, then applied it to operational costs. But again, council, this is a policy decision by council. As we go into next year's budget, you're gonna look at where we are on the income tax and you'll determine whether you want to allocate, uh, any revenue that we might have from the income tax to address issues and, and may, may divert away from, uh, the educational tax supplement. You, you can make that decision at that point in time or you can amend the current budget. We would recommend that you not do it this year. We think we have a solid methodology we've used to get where we are today.
And again, I can't highlight enough, you really don't want to use reserves and apply those to recurring operating expenditures.
I'm not suggesting using all the reserves, but I'm just suggesting that we have a considerable reserve.
Correct.
And given the current state of the economy and the inflation and the burden on our citizens that we ought to consider after three years of building up this reserve, um, maybe not raising taxes this year. So I'm saying.
And just, just to bring some clarity to raising taxes, can you just share a moment about what taxes were raised?
Correct.
And what were, and which taxes were not raised?
So we have not raised the income tax rate. The income tax rate has remained unchanged in Talbot County since two thousand thirteen. So, um, what we have increased is what is allowed by charter, which is two percent over the revenues that were certified by the State Department of Assessments and Taxation. So we take that total and we add two percent to it. And then we are able to add the penny for public safety. We call it the penny for public safety, but the penny that was authorized by voters in two thousand twenty. So we at, use that to add that to our tax rate. Then there is also the educational supplement, which actually adds, in this budget, adds four cents to the tax rate to help cover the costs, the increased costs of the schools. And that does not include capital projects.
Which also too, that's a, that's a decrease, that four cents for the educational supplement was at four point eight last year. We've downgraded it as a council, down to four cents, so we're down eight tenths of a cent there.
I, I, I wanna thank the, uh, entire finance staff, the leadership of the finance staff for guiding us through and county leadership for guiding us through what continues to be a, a conservative budgeting process.
Correct.
This is, we are continuing those policies, those budgeting policies that have resulted in, in those, in those reserves of, of, of underestimating revenues and, and overestimating expenses. And, and that has, that has left us with, with a better fiscal picture at the end of, of each of the last recent fiscal years than, than it was projected. That is really allowing us to move forward with some, some pretty important projects this year. And in particular, I would cite the St. Michael's Library expansion, the Chapel District School that we just heard about this evening. And those adjustments that we've made to, to attract and retain county employees, particularly in the public safety, you know, the, this penny that we said would go toward, toward retain, attracting and retaining public safety is doing exactly that. And it is, we have increased the, the wages for those public safety workers. And that's in the Sheriff's Office, in the Department of Corrections, and in the Emergency Services Department. And also, we've, we've done significant things and are moving forward with that this coming year with the correctioned officers to increase their, their retirement packages, which is an important part of, of both attraction and retention of those. These are really important moves that have, are, are leaving this county in much better shape than, than surrounding counties. And I, I'm proud to be part of the council that has, that has taken the guidance from this, from the staff in, in developing this budget.
The, the other thing I guess I'd like to point out is we are the lowest property tax rate in the state of Maryland. So that is quite an accomplishment. While we have raised that tax rate, we are the, we are still the lowest property tax rate in Maryland and the second lowest income tax rate in Maryland.
Just want to make it clear that I'm not begrudging or opposing compensation of, you know, our workforce, county workforce. It's just that it seems to me that we could be a little bit tighter with our budget and we're not.
Okay. The other, okay. All right, so, okay, at this point, okay, we're introducing.
This is eligible for a vote?
Yeah, but we, we.
We introduce the amendment?
We gotta.
Oh, we have to introduce the amendment.
Yes, we gotta, yeah, so a raise of hands?
I will. Yes. Okay, introduced by Callahan, Step, Lester, and Haye.
They can vote on the amendment.
Okay. Now we got a vote on the amendment. Madam Secretary, could you call the roll?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lester?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Nay.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
They can vote on the bill as amended.
Correct. We're going to vote on 1553 as amended. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lester?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Nay.
Ms. Haye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, good job. Okay, Madam Secretary, we, discussion on proposed changes of 1544. Could you read the title, please?
Discussion of Proposed Changes to Bill 1544, A Bill to Amend Chapter 190 of the Talbot County Code, Zoning, Subdivision, and Land Development, Sections 190-25.2, Table of Land Uses, 190-29, Commercial Uses, 190-29.7, In, and 190-78, Terms Defined Regarding Historic Inns.
Okay. Mr. Thomas, you want to start us off?
I'm going to turn this over to.
Are you going to turn it over? Okay, no problem. He just, he threw you under the bus.
Evening, Council. Brendan Tarleton, Planning Director for the Department of Planning and Zoning. Before you is Bill 1544 as originally introduced and also Bill 1544 with amendments. If you recall, the council originally voted on and adopted Bill 1544 on July 25, 2023. The bill had several changes in it that would result in changes to the county's critical area program. And as such, the Critical Area Commission has to also approve these changes to our zoning code. At the time that the Subcommittee at the Critical Area reviewed these changes, they had questions and concerns with respect to several of the items that were within the tax changes proposed. Based on those changes, they provided us a comment letter, which we received back in August of '23 that outlined several of their changes. I provided you with the letter that the Subcommittee had provided to the department and to the applicant as part of the bill itself. Mainly, that cha, the, the changes requested in there included several concerns related to the intensity of the in-use within the RCA, as well as the potential for impacts to other properties in the county outside of the one that was specifically requesting this, this tax amendment proposed. The two changes that were made in order to address the request and the change for the density were further limitations for inns and guest rooms within accessory structures associated with inns to be restricted to structures that existed as of the date of December 31, 2023. And the total lot coverage serving that use to be limited to 15% or 20,000 square feet, whichever is the lesser in those cases. We've reviewed those amendments that were proposed by the applicant based on the feedback that was received by the Subcommittee. We've sent those amendments back to the Critical Area and the Subcommittee for their review. They were generally supportive of those amendments. However, prior to them voting or taking any action on the bill itself, we're essentially asking for your comments or any questions or concerns that would be available, available to be forwarded on to the Critical Area Commission in their decision-making on Bill 1544. Because right now, what they have in front of them is Bill 1544 in its original format that you all approved, that they said they were unwilling to pass. So they were looking for the county for guidance and direction as to whether or not the county would be palatable, I guess, to allowing additional language or supplemental language to be included into 1544 that would offer further restrictions and limitations on inns specifically in the RCA zoning districts. So the, the amendments that I had referenced are in the included amended bill and highlighted in yellow for your viewing. And as I stated previously in talking with the Critical Area Commission, it's my understanding that those amendments proposed would address their concerns and they would be willing to discuss possibly conditionally approving Bill 1544 with supplemental language being included for further restrictions. So there, essentially, we're before you right now asking for your review, comments, concerns, or questions relative to the language, the new language that's proposed in Bill 1544 as it was originally passed.
Discussion?
Is, what's the, can you explain the, the magic of the sunset date of construction of the end of calendar year 2023? That's actually after we passed this ordinance, it seems. For historic inns, wouldn't we pick an, an earlier date?
I think originally when we were discussing this, and the applicant can come forward and testify to this as well, but I believe when we were discussing this, we were planning on trying to get this in front of the commission for their consideration at that time, prior to 2024. So the date that was inserted there was a date to, as a placeholder for 2023, realizing that the bill was introduced and approved by council in 2023. For the simple fact of the bill, essentially, the Critical, Critical Area Commission's concern was that we don't want any new additional structures for the in-use to be constructed as part of this tax amendment process. Rather, if there is a need or a desire to utilize pre-existing structures on site that may have not been utilized for the inn in the past or already exists and can be utilized by the inn, they would be generally supportive of that because it wouldn't be new impactful development in the RCA, RCA related to the in-use.
And, and all of the, the buildings subject to this were, were building compliance with, with critical areas?
That's correct. Before, before proposing any of these changes, we, we deferred back to the applicant of the original tax amendment application before you all, provided them the Subcommittee's comments and asked that they make the necessary changes that would supplement and satisfy the Critical Area Commission's concerns, but also still allow the applicant to move forward with what they would propose to do under the tax amendment if it were approved by council and the Critical Area Commission.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay. Is there, okay, at this time, is there a motion to consider the additional language in the application?
So, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Follow-up on this. The, the Critical Areas Commission simply wants an indication of an interest in proceeding with this. They don't actually need us to pass this before they act on the proposed language?
So this is, this is a bit confusing. And I tried to, tried to outline it with the help of Patrick in the final paragraph of my memorandum. Essentially, in essence, the Critical Area is trying to gauge the interest and consideration of the county for adding this supplemental language into the bill as opposed to just denying Bill 1544 that was originally offered to them as introduced and passed by you all because it doesn't include that language. And if they substitute that language in without you all's consideration, then it would be a modification to the bill that would then have to go back entirely through the legislative process once again, effectively basically making it a brand-new bill.
So I can hopefully clarify this a little bit because I know it is confusing. So under the county zoning code, when we submit these tax amendments involving the Critical Area to the Critical Area Commission, they can either approve it, they can deny it, they can approve it with conditions, or they can return it to the county with a list of changes to be made. And if they deny or return it with a list of changes to be made, we can reconsider it, but we more or less go through the whole process all over again. So by bringing this to the council at this point, before the Critical Area Commission has decided, it'll hopefully make for a smoother process if they say approve it with the conditions that this language is in there, knowing that the council is in support of that. As opposed to having to do a whole new bill on the other side if they say, we're denying this because it didn't include this or you, here's a list of changes you need to make to the legislation.
Okay, and. I think, I think I understand the process, thank you.
Okay, so is, is, is there a motion to go ahead and put forth the additional language in the applicant?
I'm sorry, one, one further question. In, in this, as, as this comes back to us, we then would go through the legislative process to make this change?
If it was denied or if it was returned with, with the list of changes to be made.
But we would, if, if this, if we indicate our interest in doing this and it goes up to Critical Area Commission, no further council action is required? It doesn't have to go to the Planning Commission? It doesn't take any further vote of this council?
Not if it's, if they approve it as a, as a condition.
Interesting.
As the way the code is written.
Seems pretty informal.
So Planning Commission hasn't, Planning Commission reviewed the tax amendment, right, or no?
The Planning Commission reviewed the original tax amendment. They did not review the revised proposed language herein. The Critical Area Commission asked that the council provide their comments or concerns relative to the language prior to taking it up at their meeting. Since you all already passed the bill, their assumption obviously was that the Planning Commission and County Council were supportive of 1544. But the language included here, they would want the council's interest on it.
So what's council want to do? Does council feel a little bit more comfortable sending this to Planning Commission with their, their thoughts? And then come on back to us and that makes us feel that it's going through that, our process, so to speak?
Yes, and then I, yeah, I would certainly feel comfortable with that.
Okay.
Also, because we want to make sure that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan and the Planning Commission reviews that to bring it back to us for a recommendation. But then also, Brendan, in your memo, the third bullet, the county should perform a formal analysis of all potential sites eligible to be expanded under these provisions. Is that being done? Is that being asked to be done? Is that a recommendation from the Critical Area Commission?
The analysis was done in-house. We did a GIS analysis of all the inns that we have categorized in the county based on their acreage, where they lie zoning designation-wise, and the existing structures on site. And it was determined that based on the way this language reads as proposed, there would be no opportunity for additional expansions for other inns that are located specifically within the county.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so at this point, yes, sir, come on up.
You're welcome.
Yep, yes, sir.
Thank you, I'm Brendan Mulaney, McAllister, D. Torsch, Walter and Walker. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. This, this bill has been in process, well, this bill was in process for a number of years. It went through your initial review and went back to the Planning Commission. And it came back before you over the course of years. I think we went in front of the Planning Commission three different times. Originally, as a bed and breakfast proposal, they asked we revise that and come back and amend the in-use. And we went back in front of them and then we came back before you. The, the bill was approved in July of last year, a four-to-one vote. And the Critical Area Commission really just wants two minor amendments and has not requested or demanded or required a, a vote or that this go back through the process. The, the two proposed amendments are applicable only to the critical area and simply restrict the total lot coverage that could apply to an in-use and ensure per the Critical Area's concerns that there aren't any new structures to expand inns. This is a, I'll call it a pretty surgical, but county-wide text amendment that was already adopted by, signed off on by the Planning Commission and adopted by the council. These two minor amendments can be approved as County's Council has confirmed. Administratively, if they're imposed as a condition by the Critical Area Commission, this isn't the first piece of legislation that's been approved by the county. And then minor amendments have been required as a condition of approval by the Critical Area Commission. In light of the, the nature of these just being more restrictive of the use in a very specific district where they would be permitted, I, I would ask on behalf of the applicant that brought this forward a number of years ago now, that the county recognize the requested changes and forward it on to the Critical Area Commission for their review and hopefully their approval.
And Mr. Mulaney, was, was this language to, to address the concerns of the Critical Area Commission drafted by staff of the Critical Area Commission? Was it drafted by you? Who, who came up with this?
I worked on behalf of the, the party that brought it forward. I worked with county staff and council to, to draft this language and have it be responsive to the Critical Area Commission's comments so that it could go before them and hopefully alleviate their concerns.
Thank you.
So, all right, Council, discussion.
I would just like more time to process this.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying.
All right, you want to.
We can certainly do that.
Push it to the next meeting?
That's fine, I just have one question for Patrick.
Yeah, you go ahead.
So Patrick, the amendments that are in this right now are based, would be conditions that the Critical Area Commission must approve or they would set it up as conditions, correct?
Yes, they'd say, presumably, they would approve the bill with the condition that this language is included.
Okay, got it.
As opposed to rejecting it because it didn't include that language or returning the bill with, with that to be made as a legislative change.
Okay, thank you.
All right, what's, what's council's feelings on, on this? You want to vote for it now or you want to, you want, you want to think through it and, and ask your questions and, and get back with more information for, for, for the next meeting? Basically, what he's telling us, okay, is, is if we pass it now, it's going to go back to the critical areas. And, and, and they're going to bless it or not with what the changes these guys made?
It sounds like they are going to bless it.
Huh?
Right, they are going to bless it.
Not necessarily. They got to look at it, you know? I mean, they've done, they've done the best they can.
That's what confuses me.
You know, they've done the best they can to actually, like Brendan said, he, he, he's talked to them and, and he's crafted language that hopefully, that were, were satisfy them, but they have to see it first and approve it. but they have to see it first and approve it in their committee. Am I right?
Yeah, so the language that was included here is language to address the concerns of the Critical Area Commission, and the, the major portion of the language actually came directly from comments from the Critical Area Commission related to the lot coverage restrictions. But yes, to your point, I mean, they still have Bill 1544 as it was originally approved and adopted by you all in their hands, so if they choose not to approve with the condition of inserting this language, and approve Bill 1544 in its original format, they could still do that, or they could just turn it down altogether. I mean, there's still several options on the table for them here.
Well, being that we don't, you know, we're not, you know, we're not voting on the bill itself, I mean, I would just, I would say just to keep things going and making sure it gets back to the Critical Area Commission, I make a motion that we, you know, that we get it back to Critical Area Commission with the, with the amendments.
Okay.
I second that.
Okay. We've got a motion second to go ahead and go for it with the new language for, to send to the, the commission for their approval. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Luscher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
I'm staying.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, next on the agenda is, Micah? Airport. Okay, let's go. Okay, you got a little, like a little list now, so we're, we're, we're time out.
We have a five minute, five minute break?
Oh, we got a five minute break? Just a sip? All right, of what? Of what?
Because I just have a feeling.
All right, all right.
What's she saying, Micah?
She's saying I'm long-winded.
Okay, I got you, I got you.
Not based on these thoughts.
Well, good evening, council. Micah Risher, the airport manager. It's always a pleasure to be, be in front of you. I brought reinforcements today. I have our new airport business manager, Mr. Jeff Langford, with us, and of course, our president, Mr. Jack Pettit, is with us of the advisory board. So, exciting times at the airport. We have a fantastic presentation for you, and I think you'll really enjoy how we put it together.
Sounds good.
Okay, just to... So, just an overview here of what we're going to go over. Of course, we are very fortunate that we had the opportunity just a few months ago to promote Mr. Jeff Langford into a new role of our airport business manager. Jeff's been with us a little over three years now. He has a customer service background, hospitality. He really has done a fantastic job as our business and marketing coordinator, so we saw an opportunity to really strengthen our team and to put him in a new role, and really to continue to strengthen those, the frontline customer service, and really build the relationships out with our, with our current customers, while at the same time continuing to market and, you know, really look for new business as well. So, I'm going to let Jeff talk a little bit about that in just a bit, and he'll kind of give you an overview of some of the things that we're working on. And we'll talk about the airfield, airfield modernization program. Of course, that is the big focus out there, it's the visible thing, that's what everybody hears about. But really, the way we put this presentation together is we want to tell you about all the great things that's happening out there at the airport. The modernization program gets all the, the press, it gets all the visibility, but we have so much running in the background to really, you know, bring the entire airport, you know, modernizing our processes, our business practices, and really keeping it, you know, the, the crown jewel of GA airports in the region. And we'll finish off with our community engagement, and we have a lot of really interesting things going on. But with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff to speak for just a little bit.
Good afternoon, members of Talbot County Council. My name is Jeff Langford, I'm the Eastern Airport Business Manager. I just want to take a moment to thank county leadership for allowing me to take part and to, to step up into this role. I'm excited to achieve some of the goals that we're going to outline here in just a moment. And as Micah said before joining the airport, I did spend five years in business development events and marketing for downtown Eastern Maryland, and prior to that, I spent 10 years in hospitality industry, working food and beverage director and operations manager for Marriott International and Wyndham Hotels. So, I like to put on my resume that I've convinced brides to change their mind. I can convince anybody to do anything. So, so we're going to take that experience, and we're going to couple it together at the airport to achieve some of our goals outlined here in this slide. And so, you know, looking at business and tenant relations, online intake tracking systems, and strengthen ESM responsiveness. Goal one is to strengthen communication with business and tenants, and what we're looking to do is we are, we are updating all of our contact information, making sure we have good contacts for all of our businesses and our tenants. And then I am reviewing all of the leases and contracts that we have in place, make sure I understand the nuances of all the different ones that we have, looking for opportunities to renew where they are available, and basically just being proactive, having those conversations early so that we can bring them to the council for consideration, having vetted them to the best of our abilities. And, and then in that process, we will also talk with the businesses, learn about their services that they provide, maybe ones that we don't know about. Where can we improve as an airport, and what do they need? So, some of the things we've done already, and examples of, of actually reaching out to the businesses and to the customers, we talked with the pilots, what are they seeing? And they mentioned that the runway 1533 numbers could be painted. So, what did we do? We went ahead and painted them. So, it's just those little proactive measures that we're not seeing every day. By reaching out to our customer base, we're finding out, and we're being able to be responsive to those. And, and we're going to continue doing that as an airport, and, and actually accelerate that through some of these other processes that we're going to outline here. As I was going around to businesses, I made sure they knew about our SMS text messaging, messaging notification systems. If they didn't know about it, we got them signed up right then there. So, face to face is important, as well as our online intake systems that we'll talk about here in a second. And then when we talk about just what do they need, not just the airport businesses, but what do Talbot businesses have that we can maybe bring them into the airport community, I point to examples of Trident Aircraft, they actually rent their hangar for large events. We get phone calls at least once a month for somebody looking for a large venue. So, we point them in that direction, but taking it one step further, how can we help promote that? How can we share that word so that it's not just the random phone call that we're getting, it's actually helping that business tell that story and get them in front of potential customers, benefiting Talbot organizations and our business at the airport? And then we mentioned here the online intake and tracking systems. We want to create a better intake system, moving things online. We're mobile as a team, we're all over the airfield, our customers are mobile, literally, they're flying in and out all the time. So, having them come to our offices to sign up for gate access cards, having them join hangar lists, it works, but it could be better, it could be provided to them online, to have them just register. And then once we had that information, we can utilize that to help better communicate with them in the future, have them do ongoing training, make sure they know how to drive on the airport, things of that nature. And then, as we go through all of that, the way I see us strengthening our responsiveness is just creating or updating our standard operating procedures, and making them internal and external, so sharing with our businesses if we have an operating procedure that we know we want them to follow, making sure they know that procedure, and having that available to them. Moving on to next slide, marketing and advocacy and economic impact study. We're going to promote the Eastern Airport. We are looking at rebranding, and looking at our brand across our channels. The goal there is to learn where airport customers go for information, and I will evaluate that the information is correct and accurate. We put a lot of energy into updating our website, and we put a ton of energy into communicating to the local community of the airfield modernization program. We want to take some of those practice, practices and utilize those by expanding our efforts into the greater piloting community, for instance. If you don't live in Talbot County, you're probably not hearing about the airfield modernization, but you're seeing it with Micah's nodums, you're seeing those with our, our different communications and channels. But there are so many third-party applications out there, and I think it's worthwhile to make sure that our information is accurate, and if it's not, get in front of those third-party applications, make sure they update those systems, and do the same thing for our businesses. And then while we're doing that, we take a look at our competition, take a look at what other airports are doing, and I can report that back to Micah, we can report it back to the council, and just see where there are opportunities to improve what we're doing as a business side of, of the airport. We want to develop marketing specifically for our land lease opportunities. We have some, some areas at the airport that are ready to build hangars, and it's not widely known, so what can we do with that? We can create a webpage, talks about that, talking points, one cheaters like real estate agents do, and, and just basically let folks know, those opportunities are there, come talk to us, let's, let's have a, a conversation about how we can make that happen for you. And then our advocacy, we are a big part of the Maryland Aviation Council. Micah is a board member, I sit on the events and marketing committee. We look to further that and advance that, because as, as it says up here, Mac's mission is to promote the growth of aviation to help meet the transportation economic development needs of Maryland. We believe in that, so whatever we can do to help support them, we're there to help them with that. And then finally, economic impact study. The Maryland Aviation Administration lasted a study in 2018. They are updating that study with current information. We're excited by that, because obviously the study was before COVID, so what is, what has happened to the industry since COVID, and what does it look like now? We want to see what those numbers are, are going to tell us, so that we can bring those to you with good information to help, help with budgeting, will help with our capital improvement projects on our end. But also, we can actually use some of that information with our businesses and other county counterparts. And we'll talk a little bit more about this later, but we've also implemented an airport monitoring system at the airport, so we're collecting data about the users at the airport more than we ever have. We can find out if an airport, if an airplane's, where it's registered, where it's flying from, and we can collect this data and actually utilize that in all of these efforts. But I look for some of the out of the box thinking ways of using that efforts to see maybe, if we're seeing a lot of folks flying in from Teterboro, for instance, you know, Cassandra from tourism might want to know that, she could then target that from a tourism aspect. So, I think there's a lot of capabilities in this system that we're just now starting to collect, and I mentioned we even will be looking into more of this later on down the road, but in, in a future slide, we're going to use this to help shape our noise abatement policy, and, and move away from just telling the pilots where we would not like them to go, or where we'd like them to be, and actually become an advocate for the community as well in shaping those programs. So, with that, I will hand it back over to Micah, and if you have any questions, I do invite that at the end of the presentation.
Thank you, Jeff. As you can tell, we're trying to be very proactive, and a lot of things we're doing in every area, and, and Jeff is very busy helping us out. The airfield modernization program, that's the biggest thing we have going on out there. Primary goals, just to review, is to improve the runway safety areas, comply with modern design standards, integrate innovative technologies, comply with all federal environmental, environmental standards, and to ensure the future of aviation in Talbot County. Obviously, we're, we're over 80 years old, going into our 81st year, so we're very proud of our aviation history here in the county. It's a shift of the primary runway, 422, 1,900 feet southwest of the current location. We're going to discontinue the use of the 1,000 foot of the runway on the north end, closest to the highway route 50, and we'll establish 1,000 foot safety areas on both ends of the runway. Currently, 2024, we are continuing our mass earthwork project. Everybody in the county has seen the dirt moving around, we are into the thick of it right now. So, the big runway, 422, is currently closed as we speak. It's, we're basically operating where we close down on Monday at 9:00 AM, and we reopen Friday at 9:00 AM. So, it's basically four days of closures, three days of open, so that's giving our, our tenants some flexibility to move about, but we are also keeping it open for, like the holiday weekend, we had it open on Monday and things of that nature. So, we're being very responsive and trying to be as flexible as, as possible to balance the needs of the contractors, our customers, and, and everybody, and, and so far, it is working, it's working well. The airport service roads are all roughed in, they'll be improved over the package, grading and drainage being worked on. They're currently working on the new wetlands on the, the Talbot County Business Center site, right where that pond is, just north of that pond. If you go by, you can see all that's being constructed right now. And we are preparing for that 1,900 foot shift by the end of this year. 2025, here in just a little bit, I'm going to ask you to actually award our, our bid package. We, we've gone to bid already, we have numbers for you, so I'll be talking about that here in just a little bit. But the, the building demolition is slated to begin in January 2025. It's going to take approximately six months to, to get it completely demolished. Of course, major utility relocation is, is part of that, and we'll complete the construction of the new wetlands, and bring that 58 acre parcel up to a final grade by the end of 2025. So, that's where the, the project is, and what we're looking at for next year. I'll pause for just a second. Do you have any questions about anything that's going on right now? I always joke that I think people are tired of hearing me talk about it. I think we, I think we've done a good job messaging it.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
So, and I always like to talk about funding, you know, that we always want to know, you know, how are we paying for this? The good news is, anytime I come and ask for money, I also bring you the, the revenue and say, "Hey, this is how we're going to pay for it." So, the great news is, 90% of this is being funded through the FAA's Airport Improvement Program grants. Of course, this is a trust fund, these are not appropriated tax dollars. Essentially, when you use the system, when you fly on airlines, you know, excise taxes, things of that nature, they flow into a trust fund, and the FAA has a, a system to dole those monies, monies out, which is why we had to stand in line for 20 years, and now it's our turn to spend the money. So, it took us 20 years to get here, but, but here we are. The state grants will generally fund 5%. Everybody knows the state has some transportation budgeting issues of their own, so their funds are, while, while they're, they're, they're getting tighter, they've made commitments to us to, to match the 5% for our project, so we're, we're feeling really good about that. And of course, our highest budget priority is to pay our portion of this, so Eastern Airport pays 5% of, of it out of our budget as well. Next slide. And we'll get into the actual numbers here at the end when I make the asks. The big thing is our informational campaign. We're always out on the, the speaking tour there, there's a photo of a, a really nice speaking tour that Jack actually set up for us. And, you know, we have, we have signs up, banners up, email, you name it. If you go to our website, and you can, you can sign up to get all the updates, Jeff does a fantastic job. Every time we're getting to go into a new phase or something happens, we keep the community updated. So, that's, you know, we definitely are, you know, that's a big, big thing for us. Community outreach, one of our favorite things. We, we love, you know, keeping the, getting the community out there, and we love interfacing with them. So, noise policy review, this is something that we proactively do. You know, the, the FAA is, is responsible for, for the noise policy as the airport. We don't have a lot of tools in our bag, but the biggest tool we have is education. You know, we, we like to be an advocate, educate the pilots, educate the community. And really, what, what Jeff and I have talked about doing is really flipping the script as, you know, and, and really being advocates for, you know, the, the community to proactively go after noise issues, or handle noise issues. So, we, we take it very seriously. We're always reviewing the traffic patterns, you know, educating the pilots for the, the voluntary noise abatement program. As an example, the Navy's Powered Flight Program is about to start next week, they'll start flying. So, we're, we've already made sure that those instructors are briefed up on the patterns, and every one of those students flying will have a copy of that PDF that you see in front of you, describing which way the traffic patterns should go. We, we keep open lines of communications with the control tower, any operators of the airport, so we, we jump on, you know, anything we hear, and we try to, you know, make it as quiet as possible, to the extent that, that we can. So, again, noise abatement advocacy. We really want to be a strong partner for all residents. We've started proactively collecting traffic data and analyzing traffic data. You know, we know that we're shifting our operation 1,900 feet to the southwest in the coming years, so there's going to be a slight shift in the operation, and we're trying to be in front of that, and be proactive, and make sure we're responsive, responsive to the needs of, of the community. And we'll be sharing a lot more information about our monitoring efforts in, you know, upcoming meetings. Just a little bit about traffic statistics we wanted to throw in there. You know, so if you look here, the far left column was pre-COVID, we did 73,000 total operations. The COVID year took us down, we bounced right back in '21, basically up to normal. '22, we, we were down again, so we're, we're kind of seeing, we're leveling, we're kind of leveling off, you know, we're finding our normal, the whole industry is finding their normal post-COVID. So, that's what we saw in '23, we were back up to 65,000. I, I think we'll be there, maybe a little lower, we'll be right around 60,000 at the end of this year. Of course, with the runway closure, that's going to have some impacts to the, the larger aircraft. We're, we really don't have good data yet on how the, the closure is really impacting fuel sales yet, because we just really have gotten into the runway 422 closures. And quite frankly, our customers are doing a And quite frankly, our customers are doing a really good job of balancing and still bringing the jets in on the weekends. So, you know, they're literally, they're waiting to come in, and they're waiting to, you know, they're getting out. So they're using those windows of opportunity that we've created to get their jets in. So of course, we fully expect to see a little bit of a decline, but I really don't anticipate that it's going to be anything astronomical or untenable. And then community outreach, we have actually, we've already done a lot of stuff, and we have a lot of stuff on the calendar. We hosted a radial engines 101 class on March 27th, that was a fantastic event to get some young people out to the airport to learn about radial engines. We have attended two of the Talbot County Public Schools Career Fairs, and we're going to Eastern Middle School next week. We're hosting a STEM leader camp later in the month of June. We've already awarded some intro flights, these are STEM leaders that work out of St. Michael's High School, I believe it is, they run a program down there. These are high school juniors and seniors, I believe. We have some A.S. summer learnings planned that we've partnered with the Civil Air Patrol. We're going to have several dates where we're going to offer topics, as you see there, airfield design, aircraft characteristics, some model rocketry, not flown at the airport, but they'll learn about it there. And then they'll leave the airport to fly the rockets, air traffic control and all kinds of other stuff. And we also have a really exciting event that's planned in September focused on getting more women in aviation. It's the 99, it's a female pilot organization, and they're hosting an event to take young girls flying. So we're really trying to push that as well and really get everybody involved in aviation. We're doing our airport tours, the Walk and Talk, we're doing one this Thursday at 10:00 a.m. It's going to be beautiful weather, the runway is closed, so if anybody wants to come out and walk on the runway with us and get a bird's eye view, it's one of the few times you can walk on a runway legally, not get arrested, so I'll put that offer out there, come on out. We do a variety of tours as folks call us and request. And this is a big one that Jeff put together, this outdoor movie night, first we've done that. But we partnered with Discovery Eastern for a showing of the Disney movie Planes at Eastern Airport. So we're going to project that on the back of the hangar down there at the airport office on August the 2nd. So we're really trying to do a lot of cool stuff to get the community out there. And I'd be remiss if I didn't put the plug in for Eastern Airport Day. The planning is already well underway, and it's going to be another fantastic year. October the 12th, 2024, we just all have to keep our fingers crossed for good weather. We'll have 50 Old Warbirds in the air, the world-famous rubber chicken drop, we have to clarify, because this is the Eastern Shore, it's a rubber chicken drop. And we'll have a lot of displays, it's just a fun day to be at the airport. So, does anybody have any questions about anything in the presentation? If not, Clay, do you want me to just go through the asks? So we have four asks that are on the schedule here, or on the agenda. So essentially, I sent a memorandum in. So we want to submit a grant application for $5,874,910 to the FAA. That grant application is going to cover the entire cost of the demo of the Talbot County Business Center, it'll pay the contractor, which is Reynolds, Reynolds, Reynolds Escavating was the responsive low bidder for that. They bid $5,184,000. And then we have two AECOM cost price proposals in here. One is for AECOM to provide the professional engineering and construction phase services like they're doing now. AECOM provides, they have boots on the ground every day, they're providing all the oversight. And so we'll have an ask in there to approve their price proposal for Package 2, which is demolition. Now, their price proposal came in at $423,0070. What's not in here, because I just got the IFE today, we go out to a third party and we get an independent fee estimate to make sure that their prices are within reason. The IFE came back at $430,000, so AECOM's proposal is less than the IFE. And same thing for the Package 3 work, where we need to go to final design, which Package 3 is going to be the actual, that'll be the 2026 work of actually building the runway, we need to design that and then prepare to go to bid for that. They have a price proposal in there of $247,000, and again, the IFE came back at $254,000. So their prices are underneath the, you know, industry. So I always knew they were a good deal, so they love us. But the first ask is, an ask for council's approval to apply for and accept this year's FAA AIP and Bill AIG grants for $5,874,910.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second to go ahead and approve the FFA AIP grant proposal. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, the second ask is to award bid number 24-03 to the lowest bidder, which is Reynolds Escavating Incorporated, for the total bid amount of $5,184,150,000 contingent on notification of AIP and Bill AIG grant awards. So we will not press the go button on that until we receive notice that we have the grant from FAA.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion, second, to go ahead and award the demolition as long as the FAA AIP approves. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Thank you. So the third ask is to accept AECOM's price proposal for professional engineering and construction phase services for Package 2, which is oversight of the demolition dated May 7, 2024, for $423,070, also contingent on notification of AIP and Bill AIG grant awards.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we got a motion, a second to go ahead and approve the professional engineering construction phase service par to the FFA approval. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Thank you. And the last one is to also accept AECOM's price proposal for professional engineering design and bid services for Package 3 to extend runway 422 and improve the runway safety area dated May 10, 2024, for $247,635 contingent on notification of AIP and Bill AIG grant awards.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, second, for ECOM pricing proposal dated May 10 for professional engineering service and design service bid, Package 3. And hopefully that the FAA AIP approves it. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
You got it.
Thank you, counsel, I appreciate it, and I just wanted to give our president a minute, so Jack, if you wanted to say anything, sir?
Well, just a couple comments. I think Micah and Jeff have done a tremendous job of educating the public about what we're doing out there, why we're doing it, what we're not doing. And I reflect on what it was like 20 years ago when there was a lot of unhappiness among a lot of people in Talbot County because they didn't really fully appreciate what we were attempting to accomplish. But I don't see that now, and I think my hat's off to them because they've done a terrific job of telling anybody who is interested exactly what's going on. And that includes the website, which has extensive information in detail on what we're doing at the airport and why we're doing it. So thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Great job.
Okay. Clay, stop.
I'll talk slowly. Good evening, counsel, under county manager report tonight, we have two appointments to boards and committees for your consideration. First one is the Commission on Aging requesting the reappointment of Terry Satchel and Jennifer Pearson to that board.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion, a second, to appoint two people to Aging Board. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Next, counsel, requesting your consideration for the reappointment of Ed Slichter to represent the 3rd Election District on the Public Works Advisory Board. Mr. Ed Slichter.
So moved.
Second.
And his name is Ed?
Slichter.
Slichter, okay. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. Have several items for your consideration additionally. We're requesting council transfer the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development DHCD housing bond allocation. As you read in your agenda packet annually, the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development requests council consideration to transfer our housing bond authority allocation. For 2024, the amount is $1,659,000, 1,659,525. And again, to simply state, this is to remit the Talbot County Bond Allocation DHCD to, for them to administer opportunities for eligible recipients. Over the last seven years, they've been able to help individuals with $6.6 million.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, to go ahead and do a bond allocation to the Department of Housing and Community Development. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
And counsel, I'll invite Dana Newman to come forward from the Talbot County Free Library. Talbot County Free Library is requesting county council certify to the Maryland State Library Agency that it will provide a minimum of $2,803,000 in matching funds for the expansion and renovation of the St. Michael's Library Branch. And Dana will add any other information and answer any questions you might have, Dana. Thank you.
So I think we've talked about the need for this project a lot, so I'll keep my statement really short. We are asking for a letter of certification for the fiscal year '25 funding, $2,803,000. You're already in the budget providing more than that, but we do need this letter of certification to move forward with the grant. And it is a matching grant, so this is a requirement of the grant to move forward. So that is what we're requesting tonight.
Motion to approve the request. Second.
Okay, we got a motion, a second, to go ahead and approve a letter for the grant for FY '25. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
And we really appreciate your support again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for staying till late, Dana.
Counsel, I invite Mr. Joe Hughes up, the deputy director of our Department of Corrections. And while he comes up, the Department of Corrections has two requests this evening. The first one, requesting council approval for an annual adjustment to the contract with Trinity Services Group to provide inmate meals at a capped increase of 2.5%. For FY '25, the cost will be $352,700, and there are sufficient funds in the Department of Corrections budget. Hopefully, I didn't cover your presentation too much, but Joe is here to add any additional information or answer any questions, Joe.
That was pretty much it. It's in the budget, in the FY '25 budget, it was already in there, and it's just a continuation for one more year.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the ongoing meals at the Correctional Center. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Since we're on a roll, the Department of Corrections is requesting council approval for an annual adjustment to the contract with WellPath to provide inmate medical and mental health services at 4%. For FY '25, the cost will be $642,534, and there are sufficient funds in Department Corrections budget. And Joe is here to answer any further questions.
Yes, this is the medical, and it's only for one more year extension.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and second to approve the WellPath medical health service, keep going, for '25?
'25.
For '25. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Yeah, appreciate it, guys, thanks for staying.
Thank you, Stan Lee.
Right.
Yep.
Counsel, thank you, that completes your county manager report for this evening.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great job. Okay. Public comment.
Mr. Lusher, we got a write-in?
We have one who has signed up in advance, that's Langley Shook.
Okay.
Thank you, my name's Langley Shook, and I appear on behalf of the St. Michael's Community Center. We opened our newly renovated building the beginning of last week. Commissioner, Councilmember Lusher was there. It's been a long row to hoe, many hands were on the plow. We're happy to say we're back in business now preparing and serving 2,500 meals per week, or the equivalent in grocery bags to those people in need. We're getting ready to roll out our children's programs and our job training programs, and we think we'll be in full operation by the end of this year. But although we've raised $4.5 million, actually a little more than $4.5 million for this challenging project, given its location and the like, and it was important that we stay there because we're within walking distance of the most important people we serve and our most frequent visiting clients. So we didn't think we could move out to the edge of town where we used to be, actually in the county, not in the town of St. Michael's. But we need a little more money, frankly. We've had to take out a bank loan, and we're paying interest on a bank loan, which is eating into the funds we'll have to support our programs going forward. Two years ago, we asked the county council for a $100,000 grant out of your ARPA funds, which I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, were a little more than $5 million. We don't think we were rejected, but we didn't get anything, we never heard anything. Then a year later, we applied again with a second letter explaining what we do, why these funds are essential, why we wanted help kicking off our campaign. Again, we didn't get anything, but we weren't rejected, we didn't hear anything. Here we are in the third year, we're asking for the same thing, not to kick off our capital campaign, which was funded primarily through private donations with some generous grants also from the state of Maryland, federal government, and $50,000 from the town of St. Michael's. But now, we're asking urgently for your help to help us retire about $400,000 of debt. Now, you might ask, if we raised $4.5 million, why didn't we go out and raise another $400,000? Well, if y'all have ever raised money for nonprofits going back to, it's a little bit like picking low-hanging fruit in a way. And we picked them pretty hard. We're still trying, we're still taking people on tours. Councilmember Lusher got yet another one of his tours last week of the building. But we urgently request and need your help. So please, please, consider a grant of $100,000 out of your ARPA funds, which I believe, if my arithmetic is correct, is a little less than 2% of the federal ARPA funding you got. Any questions or comments? I'd be happy to try and answer them for you.
I have a question.
Yeah, sure.
I do. So, Langley, can you tell me, have you received or are you eligible for any type of CDBG funding through the county?
We were told not to apply for CDGB funding at the outset. And my understanding is now we're at the stage of the project with it completed, we're not, legally not eligible for CDGB funding in any event, that's my understanding. We got a $471,000 We got a $471,000 CDBG grant sponsored by the town of St. Michael's in 2015 to purchase the old Nuttall Lumber Warehouse, a very crude facility with no insulation, no heating, no air conditioning in most of it. And that's where we've been. But now we have a, really a spectacular facility that the community should be proud of and we think will serve our clients in the fashion they need and they deserve. But no, no CDGB grant application now.
So is it that you were told not to apply or you're not eligible? Do you know?
Well, we're certainly not, we're certainly not eligible now. And we were not encouraged to apply. We were told we, my understanding is, that's before I was on the board. But I asked about that and I was told after getting the purchase money grant and given the state where we were at the time, starting the capital campaign about three years ago, that a CDBG grant was not likely to be granted and there was some question of our eligibility.
Okay.
And my understanding is we're flatly ineligible now because the construction is over.
Okay. So there's no standards within the CDBG that they would fit under? Renovations, HVAC, anything of that nature? I mean...
I believe once a project is completed, that there's, there are no CDBG funds. I'm sure Mary Kay can contact our local regional representative and see if there's maybe a special projects category, but I believe once a project's complete, you cannot go back and ask for grant funds.
Okay, so I guess, all right.
We did get a, we did get a CDGB grant about three years ago for about $100,000 to purchase our refrigeration equipment and other stuff supporting our food services. And that funding was supplemented by about $20,000 in private charitable gifts as well.
Yes, the county, Mr. Shook, the county did partner with you, as you said, on that community development block grant project to purchase the oven, the refrigerator. This was during COVID and this really, you did a tremendous effort to feed the community in the Bay Hundred area and CDBG helped you with that.
That's exactly right. That was a little bit before my time, but that was when we were in the old, not yet renovated building. For the last two years during construction, we've leased space in what used to be the Key Lime Cafe for $2,500, $2,600 per month. And that's eaten into our program support. So we're eager to get back, get open, pay off our debt, not pay interest. And we have, and incidentally, Shore United Bank couldn't have been any better to deal with. We have a favored rate, wonderful loan officer to work with, actually the branch manager, Parker Spurrie's on our board, maybe that opened a door. But we need some help. We'll raise the other 300,000, I'm confident, but we'd like just $100,000 of federal government funds for our project that we've been asking for and waiting for, for three years.
What would the 100,000 be used for? Sorry.
Yep.
What would the 100,000 be used for?
It would go to, yeah, it would go for paying off the approximately $400,000 in debt on which we're paying interest. And I'm not eager to say this, as the chairman of our capital campaign, the guy who's asked more people for money than anyone else, I'd like to say the money's still rolling in. Frankly, it's not. And it's been a little tougher in calendar year 2024 to get over that hump. We had one of our generous supporters, actually a couple, husband and wife, our largest single private donors guaranteed the loan to make it possible for us to get this below-market rate adjustable loan. But we need to end the borrowing, the interest paying, and start rolling out our programs without debt hanging over our heads. And for that, I sincerely ask your help and support.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Shook. And I can confirm that the facility is both beautiful and a vital asset to that community.
Thank you, Mr. Lesher.
We do have, we do have their request. It is on the list.
It is?
Of course, it's chairing the committee and there'll be a meeting, I believe, next Thursday. This coming, this coming Thursday. And then we'll be coming to Council with your, you know, with the request, for the remaining $2 million.
Okay. All right. Anybody else for a public comment? Martha?
Martha? You have public comment?
You did a good job tonight. Okay. All right, let's move on. Yep, let's move on. All right. Council comments? Mr. Step?
I have a couple here, so I'll try to make them as briefly as possible. I want to start off with just a quick thanks to Council for everyone for actually sponsoring the introduction of what is now known as Resolution 359 for the additional, we'll call it the Penny Bill. Perfect segue into one of the departments that is designed to benefit. I just wanted to call out National EMS Week last week. Just a great shout out, thank you to all of our EMS personnel. Quick compliment to Mr. Lesher for last week, speaking at our 250th anniversary of the Talbot Resolves. What a wonderful event that was. It was really cool to see, you know, our history in action or to celebrate, you know, our history in action, over 250 years ago now at this point. And lastly, just again, Happy Memorial Day to all who are out there. I printed out a sentence that I wanted to read. I promise it's only one sentence, but it's a very powerful sentence, so I'll go ahead and read it into the record here. "It is rather for us to be here dedicated to the great task remaining before us, that from these honored dead we take increased devotion to that cause for which they gave the last full measure of devotion. That we here highly resolve that these dead shall not have died in vain, that this nation under God shall have a new birth of freedom, and that government of the people, by the people, for the people, shall not perish from earth." That is the last sentence of the Gettysburg Address, spoken by our 16th President of the United States, Abraham Lincoln, on November 19th, 1863. Happy Memorial Day to all of our vets and all those who perished in the line of duty. Thank you.
I would just want to issue an invitation to join us for the Fourth Annual Talbot First Responder Celebration on this coming Monday, June 3rd, at 11:00 a.m., right back at the corner of West and Dover Streets here in Easton.
Thank you.
I'm going to give my time to Keisha.
Are you? Okay.
Oh, I have nothing.
You have nothing? Okay. All right, well, I don't either, so, Mr. Lesher?
The County Council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, June 11th, beginning at 5:00 p.m. That's a time change, 5:00 p.m. The Council will be convening an open session at 2:30 p.m. in the Bradley Meeting Room here for a work session to discuss the timing of the update to the county's report of the review, comprehensive plan and comprehensive water and sewer plan with county staff, and then adjourning into closed session as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. On Tuesday, June 4th, the Council will be meeting with elected officials from the towns of Easton, Oxford, Queen Anne, St. Michael's, and Trapp at 5:00 p.m. in the Wy Oak Room located at the Talbot County Community Center. The meeting is open to the public. Therefore, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene as noted?
Okay, we've got a motion, a second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lesher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayes?
Aye.[1767.47]